For being a few minutes late, welcome to the August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five Portsmouth Town Council meeting. If you would please pay attention to your exit that you the entrance you came in, there's an exit behind you and one behind Mr. Reese. Should there be an emergency, we will all leave and head over to the school department building where we will wait for further instructions from our first responders. If you would all please join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women in harm's way.
I do these to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. It was a powerful meal. That's it. I don't know who it was, but we'll blame it on this Dr. Kentworthy because he's leaving anyway, so. So those East Greenwich issue ones, they're no good. All right. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Ms. Blank.
Here.
Ms. McDowell.
Here.
Ms. Patton.
Here.
Mr. Payara.
Here.
Mr. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
I am here. Tardy, but I am here. All right, tonight we have two presentations and recognitions. First up, we have a proclamation of appreciation and thanks for Dr. Thomas Kentworthy, who has served the Portsmouth School Department for eight years as the superintendent. And a few more apply that as assistant superintendent. So if you would please join me up at the podium.
Okay, good, I got the right one. All right. If this is radio, I'd be banding right now. But I'm delaying for the town clerk to come back, but don't tell her I told you all that. Town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island proclamation of appreciation. The Town Council. Did we fix these microphones because they seem to be working a whole heck of a lot better than they used to? Can you get?
You don't give many awards?
No, well, no, I'm looking at Mr. Bree because he always sits in the back and usually you have to talk in like this for it to be heard, heard. Or heard, either way. The Town Council, on the behalf of the citizens of the town of Portsmouth, wishes to extend our thanks and appreciation to Dr. Thomas Kentworthy for his dedicated service to the Portsmouth Public School System and Administration from October twenty fourteen through August twenty twenty five. The Town Council recognizes and commends your many achievements throughout a tenure marked by progress and adversity. In particular, your leadership during the COVID nineteen pandemic ensured that students continued to learn through distance learning and transition safely back in person learning instruction. Your commitment to education, adaptability and well-being of students and staff exemplified outstanding public service. Now therefore be proclaimed, the Town Council of the Town of Portsmouth, on behalf of its citizens and the community, does hereby express a heartfelt thanks to Dr. Thomas Kentworthy for his exceptional contributions to public education and leadership and orders this proclamation to be presented on the twenty fifth day of August twenty twenty five. In recognition thereof, I, as the president of Portsmouth Town Council, hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, to be hereby affixed the twenty fifth day of August twenty twenty five. I personally want to say thank you very much to Dr. Kentworthy. We have worked closely together on the past five years, getting the building bond done, which will be finished in the next couple of weeks, on time and under budget. So there will be a little bit of a surplus for the schools to do a couple more repairs and things with it, so. That's a great achievement. We have new bathrooms, we have new roofs, we have a new one-way, we have air conditioning in both the elementary schools. So it's been a very good five years. And the town clerk is back, so we have the special Portsmouth Town of Portsmouth tile for you as well. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, and I apologize. I know the council and Mr. Rayner wanted to do this weeks ago and I couldn't make that meeting and you could have very easily mailed all of this to me. But thank you for having having me back and rescheduling this and thank you for the kind words, Mr. Hamilton. Council members and every council member that I've worked with in my time in Portsmouth and particularly a superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Rayner. You know, I still will treasure our relationship. And everyone else on the town side as well, so. Yeah, I leave with nothing but fond memories and I know that you're in good hands moving forward. But this will always hold a special place in my heart. Thank you here in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Okay. Now to upstairs, Dr. Kentworthy. Portsmouth goes to the dogs. No, one's in training. This year he's a chocolate, a black lab instead of a, yes. Would you like to come up? JJ, you want to come up? We have JJ, right? And Armin?
JJ and Armin.
Armin, all right.
We're calling him Army in honor of Kylie, who we brought here, who has matched with an Army veteran who has PTSD, so she's helping him and so.
Fantastic.
We have a little Army now.
Fantastic. You seem to have at least two at a time, right? Sometimes three?
Yes.
Okay. The Town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island proclamation declaring September twenty twenty five as National Service Dog Month. Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of human canine bond and the inclusivity of all citizens. And whereas in the United States, sixty four million adults and children have a disability and only sixteen thousand service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide and the need is growing. And whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities, providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. And whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and deeply committed community of support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. And whereas the Town of Portsmouth continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are embraced. Now therefore be proclaimed that the service dogs and adults with children, adults and children with disabilities in our community. I, Keith Hamilton, president of the Portsmouth Town Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty five to be National Service Dog Month. In the Town of Portsmouth, and I encourage all citizens to celebrate tasked-trained service dogs and be respectful for all rights afforded to adults, children and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance. Which is very important because I've seen you guys out sopping at Clements. And we've had, uh, do some, a couple of fundraisers there as well, right?
One for Distonia for Maddie's medical muscular movement disorder and then one for Canine Companions because they provide service dogs to people that need them free of charge. And that's, they do it by having volunteer puppy raisers, so if you ever look me up, if they need puppy raisers. But for eighteen years now, Maddie got Reno her first black lab when she was in Port, at Portsmouth Middle School. And so we're happy to have another black one again. And JJ, her successor service dog, is eight years old. He's a mentor now. And, um, as a whole family, we just love doing this and giving back to people that need them. And we haven't had any trouble, I can't remember when we've had trouble with any business in Portsmouth coming in, we have legitimate service dogs. I think if anything, sometimes people are so open to all dog that sometimes we've been threatened by some dogs that's maybe shouldn't be in a store or something and people are afraid to ask about that. But we are just so thankful that Portsmouth, Portsmouth embraces service dogs and know the difference that they make.
Good job, Armin.
Oh, and by the way, it's the fiftieth anniversary of Canine Companion, which is pretty, pretty amazing.
Good job, JJ.
That's the sploot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up we have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion received and placed on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Seven to zero, yeah.
Thank, uh, could I just ask the clerk to note, I think there's a typo in the, the list in there due to site restraints. I think should be due to site constraints. So I just want to make sure that's right, correct in the minutes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have our minutes from the August twelfth meeting.
Mr. President, I, I think the clarification, if I'm not, was it the clarification of the minutes you were asking for?
No, 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 for, just to make sure that when this is reflected in the minutes, that, that typo was corrected.
Okay.
Next meeting.
At the end.
Mr. President, motion to approve minutes as presented?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have our town administrator's report. Mr. Rayner.
Sorry.
What?
Um, it actually does save restraints on it.
On a public notice?
On a public notice. Beyond M L W due to cite restraints and use the use of a different shape of float.
But no, that's what, it's the way it came from the CRMC. So we're just echoing what they said. Okay. Mr. Rayner.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. Last week, when we published the agenda for tonight's meeting, I was going to note that we anticipated approval of a CDBG grant award for the heating system upgrades at Quaker Manor and Sabatous Housing. Was preparing to initiate procurement. Late Friday afternoon, we received official notice that the CDBG grant award for five hundred thousand dollars through HUD administered by the Rhode Island Department of Housing has been, is going to be granted. So this award will enable Sabatous Housing to replace boilers, hot water tanks, furnaces and related equipment in Quaker Manor's boiler rooms and Quaker Estate apartments. If you remember, the goal is to complete the renovations prior to the start of the winter season. With regard to the Mount Hope Bridge, that was reopened to traffic on Saturday evening, August sixteenth, following the resurfacing project, which was completed thirty-three hours ahead of schedule. The bridge had been scheduled to remain closed until early Monday morning on August eighteenth. But favorable weather and round-the-clock work by RITBA, Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority, enabled the early reopening. If you remember, the work involved the installation of a thin bonded overlay to improve the road surface, which is expected to last about five years. Looking ahead, the Bridge and Turnpike Authority has long-term plans to perform a full redecking of the bridge in the future. With regard to our transfer station and curb state, curbside program sticker sales. To date, one thousand nine hundred and ninety households have purchased Headley Street Transfer Station stickers. Eighty-nine have purchased Prudence Island Transfer Station stickers. And three thousand one hundred and sixty have signed up for the curbside collection program. So of these, about six thousand five hundred eligible households on Aquinic Island, five thousand one hundred and fifty are enrolled in either the transfer station or curbside program so far. With regard to our road paving, our summer road paving program, that program is on track to be completed on time, weather permitting, before September first. Note that Headley Street will be paved this coming Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, when the transfer station is normally closed. And then the town hall will be closed next Monday, September first, in observance of Labor Day. And additionally, just to note that the bike and stroll event that was scheduled for September twentieth, that has been postponed. Organizers are looking to reschedule that sometime in late October. So, Mr. President, that concludes.
Questions for Mr. Reese? Can you, you pushed the wrong button.
There we, there we go. No, I, I have another item that I'd like to just run by you and the council real quick. And it's something that has come up and I, because I'm getting calls from residents. I'd like to address the concerns about the, the town website, specifically the town council agenda and backup. I've gotten calls from residents and they range in age from, I don't know, thirty-five to eighty-five, and they're having a trouble with the new format. And it's improved quite a bit since the town clerk labeled the items corresponding to the, the agenda. But there's still issues with the backup and it does seem to be an IT problem. So I went and did some research on several town websites to see what others do. And I went through Tiverton, Richmond, Narragansett, Warren and Middletown. They util, they utilize the former format with embedded hyperlinks, which we did for years. And Middletown also provides a full-size readable, printable backup following their agenda. So I would, if it's possible, I'd like IT, you to direct the IT person to add the hyperlink on each agenda item that brings you to the backup for that item. And, and then may add a hyperlink that you, so you can download the whole package like it used to be. And we want to make it simple as possible for not only us council members, who really don't count, but more importantly, the residents of this town, and this ensures transparent and open government. We don't disenfranchise people who can't, you know, access the information in the way they used to.
Again, that change was based on advice of council to have it all in one place because it wasn't available on the state, Secretary of State's website.
It still can be added, though. We could have ours and you can put it, you can do whatever you want for the state. That's a separate.
I don't care. I didn't have a problem with the way.
All IT has to do is put a hyperlink in.
Actually, it's the town clerk that's.
It's the clerk.
We do that.
It needs to get done. Just because not for me.
We're trying to do that and we're trying to work on the best way possible for everybody. It's a work in progress.
Well, maybe you call Tiverton, Richmond, Narragansett or Warren and ask them how they, they were managed to do it.
Well, they, they don't have the full backup and they don't have the.
Oh, yes, they do.
Well, but they don't have the advice of council that it should be done a different way.
Okay, we're gonna look into that. Thank you.
It's been noted. And since it's not on the agenda, we won't take any notes on it. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Anything else for Mr. Rayner? No, okay. We'll move on to old business number one, a ratification of municipal road and bridge program for state funds, local agencies agreement between the state of Rhode Island and the Town of Portsmouth. This is for the, I believe they call it the Roadworks Program, which is not, or Road Restore, thank you, which is a program where if you, as a municipality, have monies already built into your budget to do road paving and infrastructure, we can apply for extra funding from the state. We've done that for the past three years? Two years, two years, and we'll be, and this is for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, so next July. We're currently using some of the funds from this fiscal year to do which roads. Paul, I'm, I'm, I'm putting you on the spot, my friend. How about ones we wouldn't have done if we didn't have the money? Yeah. He's getting his paperwork.
It, it's, I can answer the question.
Okay, never mind, Paul.
It's about two nine-hundred-foot roads or an eighteen-hundred-foot road. That's about what it costs. So any, pick any road that's about that long or paving project that that's long, that's about that long, and that's what this money would enable us to do. So it adds a road to our road paving program.
So it gets us a little bit closer to our goal of staying above seventy-six percent.
Correct. I mean, we give this brief, the first budget hearing every April, and you'll see that our road surface rating has been improving every single year since we implemented not only the climb to a thousand, a million dollars in the road paving program, but with the addition of the state funds, we're in a very good trajectory.
Do I have a motion to approve the agreement?
Motion to approve as presented?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have old business number two. We have an update on our finances for both fiscal year twenty twenty-five and upcoming twenty twenty-six.
Attached is the budget update for the month ending June twenty twenty-five. As of August seventh, the town officially closed fiscal year twenty-five with revenues at a hundred two point thirty-six percent of budget and expenditures at ninety-nine point thirty-three percent. Transfers out total two point one million for budgeted items, reserve funding and approved allocations, including the PHS roof repair and additional pension contributions. We anticipate closing the year with a healthy surplus, though the final figure will be determined after the audit. As voted by the council on March tenth, beginning with FY twenty-five, fifty percent of audited surpluses will be allocated to both the pension fund and OPEB until the pension plan is fully funded. As of today, approximately forty-five percent of the requested audit documentation has been submitted and the auditors have begun fieldwork. In addition, Nyheart has received the requested data from GovInvest, also known as TrueCop, as of Friday, the twenty-second. Once Nyheart has completed compiling the files, they will issue their census report to both the school and to the town. Also attached is the budget update for July twenty twenty-five. As of July thirty-first, the town was one month or eight point three percent through fiscal year twenty-six. General fund revenues were at two point zero one percent of budget, primarily from interest income, ambulance revenue and state aid. Expenditures stand at eight point nine two percent of the budget. With fifty-six million encumbered, that's for nondiscretionary spending for items such as salaries, benefits and contractual obligations. Year-to-date transfers total seven hundred ninety-seven thousand for capital improvements, property revow services and the comp plan funding. Revenues typically lag in July due to tax billing schedules with significant collections expected in August ahead of the September first due date. As of right now, it is too early to identify fiscal trends at this stage. That is all.
Any questions on either item? Not do we have a motion to receive and place them on file?
So moved.
So good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have a notice of public hearing for the ESB docket two zero two one dash four, potential natural gas moratorium on Aquinic Island. A hearing will be held on August twenty-seventh, which is this coming Wednesday, at the Portsmouth Middle School, starting at six PM. Ms. McDowell, you asked to put this on either.
Yeah, I asked to take it out of correspondence at the time of our last meeting, just to give me some background in history. It would help going into the public hearing on Wednesday.
Okay, I will try and do as much background in history as I can for you. You got the letter of how the council attacked this in twenty twenty, I believe. Twenty nineteen, we had the failure of the gas system in Newport and had basically half the island went out of gas. Luckily for Portsmouth, we didn't, which led to at that time, National Grid installing the temporary peak shaving system on Old Mill Road that they have extended now for another five years. There were options given to us back in twenty twenty to help alleviate that happening again. One was a permanent installation at Old Mill Lane, one was moratorium. One was trying to get people to transfer over to electric. And if you look at the backup, the letter that was sent to the PUC at that point in time, because the EFSB hadn't had a chance to weigh in, was to do. We agreed that the LNG was unacceptable at Old Mill Lane, and I believe we all still agree that it's unacceptable at Old Mill Lane. And request that National Grid choose options to prioritize short-term and long-term safety of our community. Assess and weigh in all short and long-term costs and benefits for our community and ensure that costs and benefits are fairly distributed among all our community members. At that point, we requested a moratorium and incentivize alternatives to natural gas to accelerate programs to reduce the natural gas demand, which would be, you know, mini-split systems or things like that, heat pumps. I also would like to see National Grid put a pipeline, a secondary pipeline onto the island, which is the only thing that's going to fix the situation. So. Mr. Reese?
Yes, do we have to live by what the last council did?
We don't.
It's been five years and things have changed.
Yep, we do not.
So.
So at this time, two other towns have had their, their meeting and taken a stand?
Against the moratoriums.
Against the moratorium.
I spoke Middletown, met last week or the week before. And Newport was a few weeks ago as well. Obviously, they both have a greater interest in the commercial side of the world.
Right.
And larger users, we have an interest of our residents being able to have a alternative to the expensive electricity systems and also to get off of oil.
So this is just basically a weigh-in by us, correct?
Yeah, the, just, the EFSB is calling this hearing to receive public input from the public and businesses. This is the EFSB. The PUC at a future date, this is also docketed with them. That's, that's the entity that will be asking for input from town legislators. From town councils and so on and so forth. So this is just the EFSB.
Having a hearing and for public comment.
To collect information from the public. There's, there's no vote being asked for by the council.
Right.
Nor, nor, nor can we, I don't think we can take one tonight based on the way it's written.
No, I just wanted some history. And then so going forward, what, what is the, what do you foresee as the timeline for the, for the ask of us?
I'd have to look up on the, uh, I, I mean, what their docket said.
I don't remember what's, yeah, Joe.
But do you know the docket date? They haven't set an official date yet, but I would, I would suggest unless I find out otherwise, next meeting or the meeting thereafter would be fine. If you want to go longer than that, I can ask.
Thank you.
So if the council wanted to take a stance, we would have to put a secondary agenda item on saying we're not for a moratorium or for a moratorium. We would like to see the secondary pipeline. We would like to see that, certainly like to see the peak shaving facility removed from Old Mill Lane as soon as possible.
And can I just suggest that if, if that's the, the intent of the council at one of those two meetings, we probably should think about how we draft that resolution in advance so that you all have a chance to, to, to see those fine points that the president just mentioned, but, but you know, look at that and consider that.
So here's our semi-dilemma. If we want to have a discussion about it to create a resolution, we would have to do it on a meeting on the eighth. And then we could vote on that said resolution on the twenty-second. Right, it is the eighth, right? I know we tossed it on the ninth a couple of times last meeting. Is the eighth, so. Sure. If, if the council was gonna discuss among ourselves what was going to be in the resolution and vote on that, we would have to do that on the eighth and then provide a formal resolution written up and vote on that on the twenty-second. Okay.
I would be in favor of doing that.
Me too.
And since it's not on the docket, Joe, you're thinking it's probably not going to be till October anyways, right? They, PUC has one meeting a month or they have two?
That is a soft deadline. If the council wanted to go beyond that, I could certainly check.
I, I would rather get it done sooner rather than later.
Yeah, so that, your, your plan works.
Okay.
No way they're going to request it earlier than that.
If you let, if they do, let us know, please.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to go ahead with having the resolution generated and to get it on the docket or how do we do that?
We, we can.
I, I don't think you need an agenda, I mean, I'm sorry, a vote or in particular. I think if one counselor wants to suggest an agenda item, I think.
With a resolution.
Maybe a little additional conversation now about counselors' opinions on components to that resolution could be helpful. But I don't think you need to vote in particular, but I think it's just a way, this, this agenda item was a way to take the temperature of the council in a public session.
I'd like to go forward with the resolution.
Mr. Gleason.
Do we know if Newport and Middletown have resolutions or they just have said we're not supporting the moratorium?
I don't think it was a full-scale resolution, was it? I think it was just a statement or a.
Has a resolution or something.
And the other one, you're correct, Mr. President, I think it's a statement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's advisable to do a, a resolution, just like the other.
Sure.
Time we did one.
Okay. So obviously, top on the list would be getting rid of the peak shaving facility at Old Mill Lane. To enable that, we would have to have a secondary pipeline onto this island, creating a loop so that the system doesn't starve from one side.
You are right.
Oh, I'm, I know that one. And then that would also entail not having a moratorium, because having a moratorium would then, it kind of hamstrings our residents in the fact that if somebody wants to get off of oil, they can go to gas, which is cleaner. And as of right now, electricity rates in Rhode Island are too expensive and it hurts our citizens who are struggling at this point in time.
But it isn't just heat. Businesses and industrial, commercial things use gas as a direct source. Because if you're gonna, because gas makes electricity. So if you go back and go to electric, you're gonna generate it, you're gonna have, uh, generation losses, transmission and line loss. So you're gonna use more gas somewhere down line to, to do all this. So the best thing is, like you said, bring in another pipeline. That's the best engineering solution you could have.
They're aware of that, but they just don't want to spend the money.
Well, then that's their problem.
Yeah, well, I'm sure they're listening right now, so. So are there any other items that folks would like to see embedded into a resolution that we can have our solicitor draw up? And if that is, i- if he has the gist of it and gets it right, we could then vote on it on the eighth. Unless there are major changes to it on the eighth, then we'd have to bring it back on the twenty-second. Hearing none? Everybody's comfortable?
What you suggested was good. Get rid of the shaving facility, peak shaving facility, bring in another pipeline. And because that, the, what they've got now is just a Band-Aid.
Correct.
And you're not gonna stop growth of gas. If you want to pe- if you want to open up a pizza shop or something, you can't do it with a heat pump, you know, so.
Unless you got a good coal-fired oven. Like Pepe's. Well, it's the best pizza. You ever had Pepe's? Coal-fired pizza, it's good stuff. All right. Um, so we need no, there are no votes, uh, we can move on to, if there's nothing else, we can move on to new business number two, which is a monthly report from Rhode Island Resource and Recovery Report that Mr. Gleason, you pulled off of last months, uh, last months, last weeks?
Be correct, two weeks ago. Um, so the, the suggestion, and maybe it's been done already, we could get an update on that, Mr. Rayner.
Yeah, so RIRAC has informed us that they are targeting, uh, September first as the start date for this change. So once this in place, uh, once this is in place, curbside loads will be identified at the scale house by uh, the drivers announcing, uh, and the Portsmouth logo on the side of the truck. And then each program will then be recorded to its own account, and the monthly automated reports will be sent uh, to us just as they were before. So instead of getting one combined report, we'll get two reports.
Excellent.
And I have a question on that. Um, how does that affect the cap? Because before the, not all the trash was coming out of Portsmouth and getting listed, going to RIRAC because they would take it in other places. Now, because it's all coming from Portsmouth, is that gonna drive the cap up and make the rate, the tipping rate go up?
The only cap that we were ever in danger of, uh, that we ever had to borrow against was the yard waste.
Okay.
Uh, and we produce incredible amounts of yard waste. That transfer station with two thousand uh, members produced more yard waste than entire communities in Rhode Island.
Oh, I, what I mean is when you, you've got the, uh, curbside pickup and you've got the transfer station, that all goes up to RIRAC, okay? So that's a, that's a net total now for Portsmouth. Whereas before, the only thing that was guaranteed to go up there was the, uh, transfer station. Because the independent trucks, I don't know where they took it. They didn't have to go to RIRAC, I don't believe.
No, only if they had a contract with RIRAC, so.
So we never, we never got up this high. Now you're gonna, we don't even know what the number's gonna be. You're gonna have a, and if that happens, the tipping fee goes up for both the transfer station and
Our tipping fee is guaranteed in contract with RIRAC, so that's, that's guaranteed.
If you go over the cap, though.
I, I'll get back to you, but I don't think we're in any danger of the cap with regards.
I just wondered if that was never calculated, because that's a number we don't really have a good grasp on until you get a year or so of the curbside in place.
Uh, true, but I mean, there are other communities that are taking all their trash to Johnston, so I don't think, uh, by adding our resident.
Well, it's in the background, but I just wanted to know that that's a possibility. Thank you.
Paul, we calculated two times as much as of the solid waste as we did with the transfer station and still came up below the cap. Like Rich Rayner said, the only cap that we had to increase and add into the budgets, the enterprise fund budgets, was for the yard waste.
Just for clarification, that, that was my thought as well, and why I wanted to see them as two separate funds. Because I, if I'm not mistaken, I think there is a point where if you don't, once you hit a certain tonnage rate, your tipping fees increase. So, you know, that would be impacting two programs rather than one if they were, they weren't divorced from each other. Um, and also the recycling rate determines what you get back as a payment, you know, as a function.
And not what recently.
Money these days, but, you know, everything counts, you know. But I appreciate you, uh, getting that split up. I, I know other towns are doing it, so it made sense.
So, no action on that? Any other questions? If not, we will move on to new business number three, which is discussion of uh, minor hiccups that have happened throughout the first month of the rollout of the curbside. I paraphrased phrasing what the agenda item said.
Absolutely, and it's, uh, and, and some of the items I've seen myself and some things, people have, have complained, you know, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? Um, so there are some specifics here, maybe there are other ones, um. We've, if you, you want to go through those, Mr. Rayner?
Sure.
We've already addressed, uh, you've addressed it with me.
So, uh, with regard to, uh, the question about stickers on the bins, uh, the stickers are required to identify households that are current with payment. So in the first year, which we're in, uh, this is not that much of a concern because bins embossed with the town logo were only issued to households that have signed up. So for this fiscal year, we've directed drivers to empty all Portsmouth logo bins regardless of whether there's a sticker attached or not. Beginning the, in the second year, the stickers will definitely be a primary meaning, means for the drivers to determine eligibility because the uh, that'll determine that you've paid the fee, but you wouldn't have got a bin if you hadn't paid the fee right now. So that's, that's a qualifier.
Well, let's slow down on that. When you, you've paid a deposit, you may not have paid in full.
Yeah, so of the, uh, right now, I think there's thirty, three thousand one hundred and sixty households signed up. There's thirty-four of those three thousand one hundred and sixty who still have a balance due. Uh, so our waste diversion manager is reaching out. Uh, last week it was forty-seven. Uh, as of this morning, it's thirty-four. Uh, and those households have been given until September fifteenth to comply, uh, or, uh, we're going to retrieve the bins. Uh, with regard to old barrels from previous haulers, uh, we do continue to work with prior haulers to encourage them to pick up their bins. Uh, in addition, our waste diversion manager and public work staff, uh, they do collect any abandoned bins that they encounter during their regular duties. Uh, these bins are then stored at Public Works, the Public Works facility, uh, until they can be returned of, uh, returned or disposed of uh, by the, uh, previous vendors. Uh, this is a temporary transition issue and will diminish over time, and I think people, uh, would note that, uh, many of the bins are now gone. With regard to barrels left, uh, with tops open or tipped over, uh, with regard to open lids, this is, lids, this is a known artifact of, uh, automated collection trucks everywhere. You can just Google it and you'll see that it's, it's, it's everywhere. Uh, the mechanical arms that empty the bins don't always, uh, allow for the reset of the bins. This also leads to sometimes to tipped bins, so similarly carts can be tipped over if they've, if they're set down too quickly, uh, if they're overloaded or, uh, if placed on an uneven surface. Uh, so this is, uh, something that we have discussed with the vendors and the drivers. Uh, so we've raised this issue with them, and the drivers are being reminded to set the carts down as carefully as they can and try to ensure that they're upright when they leave. This is also a resident issue, uh, and an education issue, so proper bin placement, uh, will greatly reduce, uh, the chance of the bins tipping. If you put the bin on an uneven surface, if the bin is loaded, particularly if it's not even loaded to the top, the center of gravity is lower and it's harder for it to tip over. Once it's empty and it gets placed back down on an uneven surface, the, the bin, uh, can and will tip over. So uh, part of the outreach is to remind, uh, residents proper placement of the bins, try to place it on as even a surface as possible. And there have been, uh, instances where the drivers and the residents are talking about where they can better place the bin so this doesn't happen. And the waste, uh, diversion manager is following up on this. And then with regard to future education efforts, uh, in the beginning, every household that signed up for the program did receive program instructions and along with the recycling instructions. As we will continue outreach with reminders about what we can, uh, what we can do to make the program better and how to place the bins correctly to improve service quality uh, and avoid these previous issues. So, uh, we think that this is, uh, normal in the first year of a, of a curbside program. Uh, but that all these problems are relatively minor, correctable, uh, and we hope to have them expect, uh, uh, mitigated, uh, throughout the first year of the program. Uh, we are noting that, uh, we are seeing increased service reliability. Uh, we're improving the recycling volumes, uh, they've gone up almost a hundred tons. Uh, we expect, uh, in the coming months to see the recycling rates expect to improve. You'll note in the RIRAC report, uh, it was twenty-nine percent in the very first month of the reporting with the new program. The range has been twenty-nine point nine to thirty point six, so we're not far off from where we were after we implemented pay-as-you throw at the transfer station. So we think what drove that is, uh, you had an incredible influx, uh, of mainstream waste and that denominator exploded because there were many people that signed up for the program and they got their bins late. Um, so you had a huge influx of trash which skewed the ratio, so we're hoping we see that, that'll correct itself in August and September. And then we'll just continue to look for ways that we can refine operations, educate students and uh, do anything we can to help people, uh, make this program work for them.
Mr. Gleason, any, any questions or comments? Ms. McDowell?
Yeah, I just have one, um, comment to make. I, you know, I'm at my house, you can see across the street when the trucks come by. And in, on two occasions, they, they pick it up, they pick up the barrel, and then the truck ejects this barrel and it goes flying onto the road. That's gonna be pretty big wear and tear on barrels if that's how that truck. I mean, I didn't go and see if it happened at the next, um, person, you know, the next up there, but I've seen it twice now where the truck ejects the barrel out, it goes bang right on the, the surface of the road, and then it's picked up and, and put back. So I, I'm just concerned about, um, are we gonna, if that is the case with maybe that truck, the norm, then we, we may have issues with, um, bins being replaced before their life expectancy, just to FYI.
Thank you. Uh, again, we're, we're constantly working with the vendors. There, I don't think there's a day that goes by where Colby isn't talking to uh, the vendors, trying to make it everything better.
I could, I just had a couple of comments. Um, I think it would be helpful to, well, first off, this has been helpful, and I, and I hope that the Portsmouth Times covers this. Um, this is probably the first civil time we've talked trash in, in a while. But the, the intent is just to, to get, you know, uh, a good service for people uh, to be able to recycle as best as possible and help the town in that respect in their own program, because they're, they're the ones that are gonna save. The, uh, the arm that picks up these, uh, bins, it looks like there's quite a reach on that, and it would probably be helpful to know if that is like an eight-foot reach and people could actually put their cans back further. And kind, if that is possible, I don't, I don't know the logistics to keep them further off the roadway, because ultimately, if you witness the operation, it is done, you know, I don't know if there's a speed control on there that allows slowing down of this arm, but it is picking up as fast as possible. It empties and accelerates so fast that there's no way that that lid's ever gonna flip back over, because it's already behind the can, you know what I mean? So that would be beneficial to know. The other thing I would, was gonna ask was, I know we had, uh, by contract the ability to take care of seventy-five households. And actually, this Friday, I witnessed somebody, you know, the driver actually dropped the can, it was on the ground, and he pushed it over with the rear wheels of his truck. You know, that's what got it, got it moved off the curb. He knew it was down, I would suspect. But he didn't stop, but he did stop, and I saw him stop at a neighbor's, uh, house, get out of the, the vehicle, go down to the entranceway and bring a can back for an elderly couple that lives in the neighborhood. Do we have any room for other, any other people for that, in that program that might be interested?
I, I don't recall how many. I'd have to get back to you. I don't recall a specific language on that in the contract. But, I mean.
Yeah, and if there is, it might be benefit.
I don't perceive that there's an issue with more than seventy-five, but I, I don't have a number in my head right now.
You think you're at seventy-five already?
I think that's what you, you just.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what it was. I think it was, that's we.
I think seventy-five was the initial
What we agreed.
contract was, but
Yeah, yeah.
we have to figure out if we're at seventy-five or only at fifty. I think that's what you're asking.
Yes, uh, if we're not at seventy-five and other people could use that program, I'm just throwing that out.
Sure.
That we could help some people.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for the update, Mr. Rayner.
And I, I'll only make two comments. One is towards the recycling, specifically for people putting things in the recycling bin. Do not put your recyclables in trash bags. Do not put trash bags in your recycling bin, because if we lose a load that goes into our cap as opposed to going to recycling. Um, and also if we, as a town, could do as best job we can responding to individuals who contacted town with issues. Uh, there should be no reason why people can't be, either get a return phone call or an email that day.
Noted, noted. I mean, Colby is
Understood.
Think he's lost fifty pounds in the last month.
I wish I could join you in that. Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, we shall move on. Uh, no action on that one as well. So we will move on to correspondence. Is there any items that, uh, councillors want to take off and, uh, talk about at our September eighth meeting? If there are none.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. We have future meetings, September eighth, twenty-second and October fourteenth at seven PM here on, here at the county council chambers. The fourteenth is a Monday, a Tuesday, excuse me, due to the, uh, Columbus Day holiday on the thirteenth. Uh, and then also, just a reminder, there is the public hearing at the Portsmouth Middle School this Wednesday night for a moratorium on natural gas. Uh, six PM Portsmouth Middle School in the Little Theater. Following the meeting tonight, we'll be having the executive session under Rhode Island General Law forty-two, forty-six, five, A two, sessions pertaining collective bargaining and/or litigation. In this case, it'd be litigation for the roundabout at Clements.
Motion to go into executive session under Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five, eight and two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, folks. We shouldn't be.